Call this regular board meeting to order? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demacchia?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's jump right into it. First hearing in the public. Did you have the minutes?
August 14th.
In a motion to approve or amend the minutes from August 14th?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Demacchia?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Okay, one of the major reasons why we're having a board meeting is to try to get some updates on, you know, what's been going on in the district. I know that some things have changed and certainly our roles of Board of Ed has changed. So this was an effort to try to get, you know, Mr. Hardy, who had a conflict here, to give us a kind of update in where we're at and potentially where he's at with his academic plan. Also, we have some other items that we were dealing with prior to Mr. Hardy getting here that certainly as a Board of Education, we have a duty to make sure that those things are still getting accomplished and one of them we'll discuss in executive session. But again, one of the updates I think we'd like to do is if there is no old business, of course. Any old business?
Well, I think related to the pending business was the public information request, which we've all had a chance to look at somewhat and discuss. And I know you and I talked earlier and one of the things that I think all of us have discussed is clarification because there are multiple issues. And I think some of us have tended to be a little bit silent on some of these pieces because everything is playing out and we're trying not to coflate things together. But I think at this stage, there's a lot of pieces that are mixed up and I think we wanted to make sure that Mr. Hardy was very clear and the public is very clear. We are not having issue with Mr. David Hardy. I think there are things that transpired in terms of process that happened before July 25th and it is clearly our intention to gain clarity on the process that occurred or transpired prior to June 25th. Mr. Hardy, like I believe 34 or so other candidates, simply applied for a job. And that was it. Now, had nothing to do with any of the process pieces that went around it. But again, when we're in this kind of situation and things are very, very passionate and folks are, you know, we're already having angst, there's already a huge transition going on and no one is necessarily comfortable because it's uncharted territory. I think some of the accusations that exist are not true. I can say personally, my knowledge of Mr. Demacchia is Tony Demacchia is not a racist. And I can say that from personal experience and relationship with him. I can say that as a fellow board member for the last, what, eight years? And so I don't think that it's reasonable to have those accusations made and none of us, especially we African-Americans who know him and work with him and have worked with him, not just as a school board personnel, but his role in the community and working with youth and a lot of other folks, a lot of other things. So I wanted to make that statement. And that's again, but when acting passionately, sometimes I think person's words can be misinterpreted or their agenda can be misconstrued. And I don't think that it's ever been the intent of Mr. Demacchia or any of this board to be racist or have any kind of bias based on anything. And so I think that needs to be made clear. Some of the folks making some of the accusations, I've had lots of conversations with and if someone would have overheard some of those conversations, there could have been a lot of racism construed. But just like I don't think that was what you were intending to do, I would say to other folks who maybe even have accused you, and I can talk about conversations I've had with some of them, I didn't interpret their response as racist either. So I think that needed to be stated. And what you're doing in terms of leadership is what has to be done. It's not comfortable, but we have to make sure that we provide clarity. This is not an issue with David Hardy. And there has been an asterisk in some regards by our CEO's name and he's our CEO and we're going to do everything that we can do to clarify so that we can move going forward in a positive relationship. It is what our job has been. And House Bill 70 did not change what our job was. It didn't change what we signed up for. It may have changed some of our authority, but it didn't change our intentions. And so we intend to contribute to the leadership of the district like we have in the past. We don't run the district. We are part of the governance and part of the leadership of the district and we expect to work cooperatively with David Hardy and our administration and any other leadership in pursuit of that duty. But again, I thought it was very inappropriate and unreasonable and I apologize to Tony if our silence and not coming to your defense puts you in a greater awkwardness. But I can say personally that I don't know you to be that way. And again, our issue is not with David Hardy. We have some serious questions about the firm's behavior. We have some serious questions about the role of ODE in its oversight of this entire process. And our relationship with ODE isn't new. We've been working with ODE for at least four years specifically around this and especially in the last 18 months. And so some of the things that transpired were contrary to what our conversations were and the confidence that we had established. And it is going to be imperative that we are able to have these open discussions so we can repair that relationship. And so transparency and open communication about the process is not negotiable. So I think we wanted to make that statement clearly today. And so I would also recommend that the information request that be reviewed with Mr. Giardini and make sure that we are specific about what we're asking, which I think we are, in making sure that in that request, it can't be misconstrued. There's no reason to even mention Mr. Hardy's name in there. Why? Because we're talking about what happened before July 25th in that process, correct? And we don't want anything that would even make it seem like, because some folks are looking for those little pieces and then they'll build a whole narrative around that. So, and I think it'll be, I think it's appropriate. I am disappointed, as you've stated, in the lack of response to some of those requests. And sometimes I think when legal counsel makes requests, people respond differently. I know when I get a request from a lawyer, I tend to respond a little differently than somebody else. So I think we should use legal counsel to that advantage in how they represent the district. I think these should be open conversations like we're having today. There's nothing that's hidden about what we're doing. There's nothing wrong with what we're doing. We're requesting information that is public and we need to review that information so that we have confidence, either we have comments in the process or the process is exposed and we can then correct the process going forward. And I think that is our intention. So again, thank you, Mr. Demacchia, for the leadership and getting out in front of it and taking some of those hits. But we, I think from our conversations, most of us are very unified in how we support the district and expect to continue that going forward. So those are my comments around that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And again, I appreciate your comments and certainly I thank you for those because I do believe that sometimes a situation can be perceived in a way that it really isn't. And I think I've been clear about some of the things that I've said from the beginning about the process. It's always been about the process. It's not about Dr. Graham, it's not about Mr. David Hardy, it's about the process that got us here. And again, it's also not just about Lorraine. Lorraine is our primary concern and that's our priority, but this is public education as a whole. And again, as I said to somebody the other day, listen, they had two opportunities to try to make this process work and Youngstown, they haven't been so successful. We're new to this step of the phase of this process and again, I don't think that they started it out the way they should have, but ODE needs to understand that if they believe that this is how to properly reform education and how to increase the academic achievement of our students, they need to do it the right way. And it is about the process.
And you know, House Bill 70 is, Jim, you can do all that huffing and puffing and make all those faces, it's rude.
Well, this isn't even a proper time.
Jim, Jim.
This isn't the common time of the meeting.
The chair has determined we can have this discussion. If you want to participate.
The chair?
Yeah, the chair.
It's under old business.
If you want to participate in the discussion, participate. That's all, I mean, because you have valid things to say.
You're all saying the same thing over and over. Fine.
Right. So again, I think in, House Bill 70 is really where we have to look at, that's the real challenge. And if it has us going at each other in certain kind of ways, I don't think anybody on this board has been believing that House Bill 70 was the answer to reforming public education. And there are a lot of victims that become part of that. And I think in this case, just like we were victimized into it in our district and a lot of other folks, Mr. Hardy, the commission, listen, this thing was set up so that it would be difficult to perform the process well. I mean, the timelines, the lack of consideration of process. So again, I think we're all victimized by that same piece of poorly written legislation and we need to do everything that we can do to make sure that our district survives and improves in spite of the bad legislation.
Report and update from the treasurer?
I just wanted to give an update on the health trust situation. We had talked about it back before we broke for summer and they were last reported, we're kind of in a bad way and we're trying to figure out how to just get through. They didn't want to make any tough decisions prior to the break until everybody got back. So they, the board passed the loan option and I can report that the loan was never taken out throughout the summer. From all accounts, there was, the claims didn't get better, but they at least stabilized. So we weren't having the increased cost. So based on that, then, we met for the first time, I believe, August 31st. And at that point, it was presented to the trust by the actuary that to get through, through the end of calendar year '17, they were projecting about an $838,000 shortfall. So that's kind of where we're at. We've been exploring options between me, Dr. Graham, and Mr. Hardy sitting down, kind of looking at different directions, not only, it's kind of the same thing the board was doing, short-term and long-term, how to get through the end of the year, looking at plan design changes, looking at different providers. I can tell you that they've looked at possibly differentiating between A and B a little more, where there's not enough difference for somebody to want to opt in to B, that for the short, you know, short amount difference, that it makes sense just to go to A. The other piece we've looked at was to explore going down the path of maybe a wellness plan. Again, and I know we've tried it in the past, but I don't know that it was incentivized enough to make it make sense. So that's kind of where we're at. The idea was thrown out to get through the end of this year by the negotiated amount of the $400,000 for the three years, to advance that sooner than the January 1st date to get them through this year and basically just trying to buy themselves more time to try and figure out a long-term plan. But that still only makes up less than half of what the projected deficit will be. So they're still looking both ways.
So what happens if, yeah, if we don't do something, does that mean they have to split the call? I mean, what's?
Claims don't get paid and ultimately the health trust itself, the members are, would be held fiscally responsible for it. Doesn't fall back on the board, it doesn't, technically it should fall back on everybody within the trust.
So, so anybody knows the members means the teachers, the employees, everybody who's?
All staff.
All staff. Or even board members who have, who are part of the, who buy in health.
Yes.
Okay. And so make sure it was clear that the resulting consequence is we got to figure out, it's one way or another, how to?
Yes.
Pending that we don't have any major claims.
Yeah, that the claims stay steady.
I mean, that's.
That's not.
As if we go business as usual with normal claims.
Well, and here's the other scary part, the $838,000 is not including any amount to restock the reserve. The reserve is sitting at zero. That is to end the year at zero.
How close are, is the plan to the planned stop loss? Which means anything beyond that would be fully insured.
From what I understand, we've had a few claims that have come close to it.
I'm not talking about a claim, I'm talking, there's two stop losses. One per claim and one by, and the plan has a stop loss. So if the total claims go over a certain amount of money in a calendar year, the insurance company, who is I think is Blue Cross, Blue Shield, whatever, it's not Blue Cross anymore.
Medical Mutual.
Medical Mutual, because they got in trouble with Blue Cross when they tried to go for profit. So once you get beyond that amount, you know what the loss is going to be. So I'm just, maybe you could find out, let us know how close we are.
I'll find that out. I don't.
I don't know what it is.
It hasn't been thrown out, so I'd imagine it's probably such a high number that we'll probably still won't hit it regardless, but I'll check it out.
I don't, I don't know, but.
I don't believe we're close.
Yeah, it's not.
You're not close?
The only thing they said, yeah, the only thing that they said was close was the individual claims and we've only had one that have hit that. Every other one seems to be hovering just below it.
We had 11 or 12 that just went just under.
Yeah, the individual stop loss.
And again, I just want to stress too, make the point, this is not as a result of bad or poor management.
No.
It's just we had so many claims that were so high that.
Well, it was also, it was some of the severity of those claims. Those are some very, very expensive medical procedures.
That's what they said. In a normal year, you have about three that are the size of some of these claims and we've had 12 to 13. So it just all hit all at once, so.
Is there any more discussion about exploring a fully insured plan? Or haven't they figured that they're in big trouble?
Oh, they know they're in big trouble. We've, I mean, between me and Dr. Graham and Mr. Hardy, we're looking at other options beyond. But they've looked at other plan designs, other providers, and by all accounts, they don't see, they don't see it as a long-term plan. They said based on what we're costing out with MMO, Medical Mutual, that it's not, it doesn't make sense to go down that. So it's, it's looking like it has to be a major plan design overhaul or some other combination to that effect.
I had a question. When you say they?
The trust.
The trust.
Well, the actuary for the trust.
Okay.
How many insureds are there? I don't mean family members. Do we know how many employees are insured?
Yeah, upper fours, like four, upper 490s.
So let's assume there's a million dollars unpaid. Just divide that number in a million to that and that's what each person has to pay.
They're projecting that if we were, if employees were to absorb the cost totally, it was like 72% or something increase on their current rates.
Yeah, that's the reality.
And what happened with the county plan when it went broke back in the eighties, providers refused to treat people insured under the county plan because they hadn't been paid for the last treatment. And that's when it really hits home, when you get to the doctor's office and they say, well, if you pay this, well, do this. And I think the long run future, self-insured plans have not prospered well, even in big corporations. Most have gone back to fully insured plans and there you know what you're, you know what the premium is and that's it. Nothing more, other than uninsured medical claims, you know.
I could just echo that point, that that's what happened to the county back in the day. We are not close to that point at this stage where they're going to deny service for claims.
Go ahead.
And what if, without this part here, is there a, is there a projected premium increase already for next year?
Well, I think that's what that would be, is that around 72% with nothing else, keeping status quo would be 72%. And that was the thing they looked at was, they threw out, they price compared like Edna, University Hospital, or was it UH Choice? There was a few other ones. They costed out about five of them. And there was savings in other areas, but when you looked at overall plan design, the cost differential wasn't much different than Medical Mutual. And I will say that they went back to Medical Mutual and were able to get more pharmaceutical rebates back by telling them basically, we're costing this out, you need to get a little more, you need to sharpen your pencil on these numbers and make sure, you know, you're really doing everything you can for us. And I think that ended up being about 200,000 to 250,000 additional, I think is what they were projecting in pharmaceutical rebates, but I think that number is probably still up in the air too. That was what they were roughly projecting, so.
So hypothetically speaking, if the district doesn't advance the $400,000, what's their next move?
They've made a few plan design changes that only equals maybe about $28,000 in savings for the remainder of the year. The thought process or what was thrown out for us to present back and forth was that advancing of that 400,000, if we don't do that, then, to be honest, it's got to be percentage increase for the remainder payments for employees.
Well, the advance isn't, it's not a disadvantage to us, it's just doing it sooner than we would do it.
Just doing it sooner, but it doesn't help the problem.
But it doesn't end anything.
If anything, pushing everything.
Kicking the can down a little bit and then we still got to deal with the long-term.
I guess my, I guess my point is, when they deplete that advance, what's their next move?
We're still in the same boat.
So why are we putting a Band-Aid on it when we should be really talking about what is the real solution?
I'm not sure that anybody, there's, right now, I think everything is on the table and again, I can't speak for anyone, but I think the focus has been a short-term plan while we process a long-term plan.
Has anybody got a quote for a fully insured plan? Not a quote for somebody else managing it, like, maybe they ought to check that out?
You know, Mark, you were working, what?
We were working, but we were right in the middle of this thing when the CEO came and it kind of stopped all that. But there's a, there's a couple quotes out there that were being cooked up for us while we were in that process.
We should probably restart that thing.
Yep. Mr. Hardy and I had a slight conversation about it and I think he's looking into some things.
But remember, even if you go to a fully insured plan, any outstanding claims would be, still be the responsibility of the trust. The new plan will only pick up from day one.
Right.
Of when they take off.
But the reality is this one is hemorrhaging. I mean, there's just.
Well, it's just been a matter of time, Mark, since it began, it was stupid.
I agree.
And healthcare costs have quadrupled since, since then and now apparently Congress thinks they have a chance to do something with Medicare or with, not Medicare, Obamacare, so who knows what that will change? That will back, back, fall back on the, on the plan, so.
It's volatile.
Bad move. As long as all the boards responsible for is what they've negotiated.
A dollar amount is a percentage.
Yep. And if, if you, it's like what Tony said, it's a payday loan.
It is.
You're going to be right back in the hole again.
Yeah.
Paying off your credit card and then running it up again the same amount.
Well, and all their projections include that additional 400,000 next year, okay, so you push it up, then you're going to take that 72% and bump it even, even more, so.
I think we really have to consider though, allowing this trust to continue to play with this time bomb that we, that we have. At some point, we own it, guys. At some point, it's the board's responsibility to make sure we're doing the right thing because those are our employees.
It's also negotiated.
I agree.
And I think that's been the issue, at least in my two years here, is the board's pushed very hard to do this and it's not what the union's going to do.
We've tried other options for a lot of years.
And their members here, 72% increase.
And sometimes they might not have wanted to, but.
First year that Mr. Demacchia and I were on the board, we met with the trust and Mr. Giardini and the picture wasn't, wasn't, wasn't very good then and that's almost 10 years ago.
Right. They just want to look at other options and, I don't know, maybe the current situation will force them to take a look at other options.
I hope so.
Not like we haven't had these conversations.
Yeah.
Multiple times.
That's right. One of the, the two proposed plans they were talking about would eliminate Cleveland Clinic from coverage. So they kind of balked at that idea, obviously, because the usage rate of Cleveland Clinic is ridiculous. So when you look at that, then they started looking at, okay, well, what is the percentage increase per person? Where it could have been significantly lower if they would have went that other route.
Again, I just want to stress, because people are hearing soundbites, it was a brainstorming session, so a lot of things were discussed, but no one's taking any, any given direction.
You're just trying to put it all on the table and see what's.
What makes sense, what makes sense, yeah.
Exploring every possibility.
The goal is not to scare people, but there's a reality that we have to face that's 72% increase.
Maybe the state will pay it off now that they're.
If it wasn't broken, it appears to be now. But again, I just want to stress, it has nothing to do with mismanagement, it has to do with a lot of large claims that came in a very short period of time, statistical anomaly, but it happened, so we're here.
That's why there's only about five major insurers left in the health insurance business. They all got out because it became too unpredictable.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Next item on the agenda was, we were hoping that Mr. Hardy could join us for an update, but his schedule didn't afford him the opportunity of being here with us this evening, so we'll bypass that on the agenda and move right over to a report and update from superintendent.
And I was asked to give an update on a couple of facility pieces, George Daniel Stadium, and then we looked at some, had some conversations a few months ago about that. Thank you. And also the Southview facility. So as always, I actually am going to lean on the people who know what they're talking about, so Jeff Hawks, if you'd be so kind, is to update the board?
I believe the last time I updated the board was with the facilities group. We had the GPD group that came in and had taken a look at the facilities plus, meaning the stadium and also the old Southview High School. The stadium, there were some pricing that we did discuss, well, the proposals that GPD group gave us from doing just basic all the way to getting somewhat of our, if we would build it, they would, dream build. We also had talked about the Southview, the old Southview High School. My concern with that is we're getting to that point of where we haven't used it now for, what, a couple of years?
Two years.
We've kept it what I call idle, just maintaining a temperature and maintain what we can in the facility. So as, as everybody knows, once you leave a building, it starts to die. And so one of my concerns that I did bring to Dr. Graham was that we're going to have to put some money into it in regards to the boiler system. Because we've been putting off and knowing what should we do with the facility. So that's going to be an added cost to the district out of the general fund and putting some money into a A, one of, A boiler of one of the three, just to maintain some type of heat in that facility. But that's where we are, we're getting to the formula. I think we need to decide what we need to do with that facility, it's hitting that.
Has there been any feedback on the possibility of the VA using something there? Is that viable or have they written it off?
No, I think we've written that off and I think we've retracted our letter some time ago.
Cincinnati has had a great deal of success. What most people don't know about House Bill 70, it had nothing to do with what is happening. House Bill 70 originally, without the amendments, simply says, "A school district that no longer has used for a facility can turn that facility into a community learning center." Cincinnati Public Schools have done that with two of their buildings. You'd have to get a group, a conglomerate of, the building is not yet 50 years old and it will probably, if it's properly maintained, last longer than this one. And we were at a meeting over at Harrison the other night, it's 117 years old and it'll stand another 117. But, you know, maybe El Centro, maybe some other, and I had mentioned, asked you once, Mr. Demacchia, if perhaps the Boys and Girls Club would be interested in just running, running the gym? Is that a? Is that a viable thing yet, or not?
It'd be tough for us too, because of the facility costs alone.
And that's always the problem, Mr. Hardy, is that there's nobody out there that would have the funds to...
Well, maybe if you would, if someone from the district would contact the folks in Cincinnati?
In fact, I have a date coming up with Cincinnati Schools, they're coming up to actually look at this facility here.
Well, maybe, maybe you could ask, ask them, because I only know what I've read in OSBA, you know, literature that, or the House School Boards Association. But a few years ago, I got a call from a Southland resident, very concerned about just tearing the building down, when it could be repurposed, is the words that she used. So if that's a possibility, or part of it. Now, where do we stand with the state as far as demolition?
The state, we still have our contract with them, but as we are completing the payment of this beautiful high school, I foresee that they are going to start asking us to close the project. We spent a little bit over $300,000 years ago to re, on abatement, in order for us to reopen it.
When, when the high school moved back there, yes.
That leaves us with a little less than $900,000, probably around $900,000 to finish the demo and abatement for that facility.
It won't be enough, I don't think.
If we do to wait, yeah, because that's just natural right now for construction.
I think the other thing is, and this is a conversation I think, hopefully, you guys are having with Mr. Hardy, and then we have to all kind of figure out where we are on this, is the alternative high school piece, because that is kind of the, that's what's up in the air, and that has a lot of implication on that facility, whether it's demolished, whether it's, whatever happens, but I think these conversations kind of go hand in hand. And I think that's been our challenge, is be it the VA, be it potential for the alternative high school, something, because we are on a short-term piece in St. Mary's, and that space, that was part of the plan, so we really need to kind of refocus and accelerate, because it's hard to decide about that building and demolishing it in totality or whatever. And I think any sacred cows that we've had about the building are pretty much going to rest. It's becoming, what is going to be financially feasible, and what's going to give us the best learning facility for that population of students? But they do go hand in hand, and I think we can't have one conversation without the other one.
And I agree with you on that, and as we spoke about the health trust, I would say we need to not get to that point with our stadium project, and also with the NBA, or what we need to do with Southview. I don't want us to continue to keep this, you know, can down the road.
And I think for, for us, we need to know, and Josh, you know, with the stadium, what is that cost look like? What are the potential resources with the alternative high school? What does that cost look like? What are the potential resources? And then we have to figure out which avenue to travel, because those are two pieces that need to be addressed. I mean, the stadium has been, how long has it been since it was, had any real significant improvement? Long time.
2000, I think. I, I seen a plaque that said that was redone in the year 2000.
And that was probably a subtract or something.
Something was done to it in the year 2000.
We've had multiple little...
If you've been in a, in a training, or, or if you've been in the rooms that the kids use, or if you went to the restroom in the stadium, it's the same as it was in the 1960s. Some paint, you know, that's it.
Well, maybe you could find a, we were close back in 2011, 2012 with US Steel, but then that went south, and looking for a sponsor that would cover the, well, the mid, the big, the big costs. And the stadium itself was, is 90 years old, almost. Next year, it'll be 90 years old.
And the facility, I don't think, the facility is still good, meaning the structure...
Yeah.
Pretty much, it just needs a makeover, if we can say.
Well, it's probably been a long time since a major, there was one done actually back in the Depression with WPA money. That's when they added the lights, and, and I don't know when they built the, the stands, which would be on the east, I guess. But it's been a while. We had the anniversary of it in seven, in 19, in 2003, when it was 75 years old, and what, that's 14 years ago already now, and so it's been around. It's well-built. Jeff was, I happen to have the dedication program from 1928 that I found at a shop on Broadway, and what was the cost? About $40,000?
$40,000.
Yeah. That included the land.
And while we're there, Mr. Demakia, we've talked about this a little bit. We talked about Mr. Popiel, and the desire to, for the board to maybe consider at some stage soon to help memorialize his work here in, in some kind of naming, be it part of it, be, facilities, gymnasium, or something, so that's kind of also in that conversation. That's, you know, when we think about the folks who've really contributed to athletics and into students, I mean, he's been just, and rarely do you have someone who you want to memorialize like that while they're alive.
Yeah.
But that would be something that we should really look at.
Well, that was the, when they named, renamed it, it was originally Recreation Field, and its proper name is George Daniel Field, not George Daniel Stadium. And when they, when Daniel retired in 1958, three of the football coaches came, came to the board and asked that they rename Recreation Field in memory, oh, he was still living, he was retiring. And the board did, and they, actually, I have read the board resolution, which anybody can do this, go to Josh's office, it's, because it's against the law to throw away school board minutes, and you can read the minutes from that board meeting where the board declared from this day forward, it shall be known as George Daniel Field. And, and it has been, but that's goodness gracious, many long years ago as well, so...
Didn't we name a baseball field after him?
Yes, we did.
Unfortunately.
We used to have the baseball fields before we did...
Before we did the construction.
My, my recommendation would have, would have been, had, had it got to the point that we had another baseball field, I think it would have been appropriate to rename it Jim, Jim Popiel Field, being that we already had it, and we would just be returning it.
Not only that, I mean, the profile, and I love baseball, but it's like, his persona should be something that's for us, that's a major, I mean, we have, we have a new gymnasium that we haven't named yet, so, I mean, I think we should consider...
Why don't you go over to WEOL, because he was their announcer for how many years? That's how he became known. Maybe they put a little money up to, to name something for him.
Anyway, that's just something to, maybe we can put some folks together, some citizens to participate in that discussion.
Well, you have the Alumni Association.
While we're talking about it, where have we gotten with the pipe yard?
That is a...
Thank you, sir.
I'm glad I can help.
At this time, we're, the city is still in control of that situation with the pipe yard. If I'm not mistaken, I think it may have to go before council, folks actually have that time for donation.
Yeah, last time I knew, they're still working out the contract and working out the language.
I've been confronted by a few folks about that one.
Good. Just asking. Anything else?
That's all we got.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Thank you, Mr. Hawks. Any new business? Any requests from board members? Fantastic. Second hearing of the public.
I would like to know, do we have definite dates that Mr. Hardy will be here so that we will know straight from here when he's going to come?
He's here now.
He's here today?
Mm-hmm. They moved over, they moved in over the weekend.
But he wasn't unable to make his...
That I don't know. But he's, his office is where yours was, right?
Yes.
So you could call, it's two, it's 830-4000 and ask Kalena. You could probably set an appointment if you want to talk to him, or...
83...
But I know at the NAACP banquet, he was there, his wife was there, they have moved, they're permanently here now.
And that was yesterday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Hmm?
So he is here?
Yes.
And he has a home in San Antonio?
I don't know that.
I don't know where he is.
I know he told me they were going to rent first, so they had proper time to find something for their family, and, but other than that, I know not.
And the rest of the board members know not?
Apparently.
I'm sure we will all learn soon.
We will learn, yes, I guess.
Anybody else? Fantastic. We do need to go into executive session, but before we do that, our next scheduled board meeting is supposed to be October 2nd. Just thought I'd announce that. And we do need a motion to go into executive session for Item C, conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. Can I get a motion?
Where's the attorney?
She's here.
Christine Costler, the best...
Oh, okay.
Very good.
And so there will be no action to follow.
So...
Do you need a motion? And a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lurmaine City Schools TV20 WLCS.